We'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, for coming and thank you. I can't think of anything else I'd want to do on such a beautiful summer evening. But with that, I'd like to turn the opening over to Counselor Susan Penner, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, I went out for breakfast with someone who has some different ideological beliefs than I do, and she than I. We knew this going in, and it was actually the reason we wanted to get together, to gain some insight and understanding of someone who doesn't share some of the beliefs we each have that we're pretty entrenched in. We talked about all sorts of things, ranging from faith to abortion to politics. And do you know what? It was great. And the fact of the matter is, there were a lot of things we did agree on, probably more than we disagreed on. We live in a very divisive, polarized time, where people are told to pick sides on issues and then demonize those on the other side. But this is hugely destructive and takes humanity out of the equation. We do ourselves a big disservice when we don't engage with the other side, when we put politics ahead of people. I personally have witnessed a conversation where a pro-carbon tax and anti-carbon tax person nearly came to blows. From where I was sitting, they both had valid and well-meaning perspectives on the issue, but they ultimately had no respect for each other. Engaging with those who have different beliefs than we do does not mean we have to compromise our core beliefs, but the truth is, there's a lot of middle ground where incremental changes and improvements could be made that don't compromise either side's core beliefs. So let's bring respect and humanity to the table. Let's allow people to have different views and still work together for improvements. Let's put good policy above political allegiance. Let's just talk to each other. Chances are, better decisions will be made than when either side goes at it alone. It's time to put people ahead of politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. Okay, counsel, number three we have to adopt the agenda. We have the agenda in front of us. I'm looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Bill Hebert, seconded by Counselor Siemens. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We have the minutes in front of us from June 4th, 2019, the regular council meeting. They start on page one. Counsel, we've all had a chance to review them. Would like to have a motion to approve. Counselor Swagstra, seconded by Counselor Penner. Anything, any comments? Okay, nothing from counsel? Okay, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. We are just a few minutes before 7:35, so we will go to 9A, Accounts Payable. That's in the back of the book. We've all had a chance to review. I need a motion to approve. Counselor Susan Penner, seconded by Counselor Bill Hebert. Any comments? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We'll go to 9B, the financial statements ending May 31st, 2019. That's also in the back. Counsel, we've had a chance to review that. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Damian Penner, seconded by Counselor Jake Siemens. Any comments?
No.
Okay, nothing further. Call for the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, we are now at 7:35, so we will go to item 6A. That is the public hearing for the conditional use CU 2019-02, RE, Unit A, 92, PTH, 52 West. That's found on page three of your package. We will now close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this application, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is conditionally used file CU-2019-02. And the owner of the property is 5304091 Manitoba Inc., with the applicant for the conditionally use being Local Matters Thrift Store. This property is located on Unit A, 92, PTH, 52 West. The purpose of the application is to allow retail sales business on the subject property, where under City of Steinbeck zoning bylaw number 2100, all retail sales are a conditionally use within the M1 light industrial zone. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. With respect to the application, this business has actually been operating for several months. However, it does not appear to have negatively impacted the general area or neighborhood. Recommendation from administration is for city council to approve the conditionally use subject to an occupancy permit being obtained.
Thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Is the applicant here today? Do you wish to speak to us?
I'm not sure if we need to.
Okay. Oh, you'll have to take the podium and state your name and address, please. Because it all gets taped, that's why.
I'm Chris Geisberg. I'm manager of Local Matters Thrift Store. We're a nonprofit store, registered, board run. When we moved into the building, we were unaware of this recommendation or this thing that we needed. We, as Mr. Workinteen has said, we think that we fit quite nicely in with the neighboring businesses, and that's about it.
Are there any questions of counsel? Yes, Counselor Hebert.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one question. Is this the same business that was on Acres Drive previously?
Yes, it was. We outgrew the Acres Drive location basically the day we opened. This one, too, we're rapidly filling it up. The need is there. And basically, our mandate is to help the less fortunate in all of southeast Manitoba, not just Steinbach.
As you know, I've been in it.
Yep, perfect.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, Mr. Geisberg, you can sit down and continue. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Is there anyone here wanting to object? Okay, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Okay, seeing none. We will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swagstra.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a secondary? Counsel Jake Hebert? Go ahead, Counsel Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, under a zoning bylaw, when you're in an M1 light industrial zone, obviously the primary use are industrial activities, but retail sales are permitted as a conditionally use, meaning that counsel is the option on a case-by-case basis, looking at whether the particular retail sales being proposed would fit within the area. This seems to be an example of a case where the conditionally use is just fine. There is precedent on this. The council had previously given a similar conditionally use to Meadowmark on 62 Life Sciences Parkway, which is also industrial, and had allowed that. And also, with the business currently operating, there seems to be no conflicts in the area, and having a thrift store in a light industrial area seems to be an appropriate fit. So I see no problem with the conditionally use.
Thank you, Counsel Swagstra. Anything further? Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing, counsel? Well, counsel, I think the, I agree with the comments of Counsel Swagstra, but I also think there's one more key item here, is that this has already been operating since 2018, and it appears to have no problems. So I will support this motion, too. So we'll go to the question. Call for the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Okay, counsel, now we'll go to 6B. This is variance V-2019-16. This is RE, referring to 306 Main Street. Starts on page 11 in your packet. We will now close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Workinteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this is an application for variance file V-2019-16 for 306 Main Street in Steinbach. The owner of the property is LS Properties, 306 Main, Steinbach, Inc. The applicant for the variance is Mr. Jeffrey Ides. Purpose of the application, the applicant is requesting to waive the parking requirements for an amusement enterprise indoor, whereas City of Steinbeck zoning bylaw 2100 requires 30 parking stalls to be provided. The applicant is proposing to use the existing building to open a personal training facility, and as per the application, a supplementary retail space will also occupy the site. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. With respect to the particular property, this building has been in existence for several decades and is unique in that the building itself virtually occupies the entire footprint of the physical property. It has been, historically, operators within that location have provided sufficient parking generally for the staff that operate within it. And as a result, and also in light of the recent precedent that the city council considered with respect to Calvary Chapel on Main Street and the parking variance that had been approved in 2018, recommendation from administration is that at least at a minimum, the required number of parking stalls to be provided by the applicant be a set amount and be equivalent to the number of employees that the applicant and any other occupants or occupants are proposing for the site, to be confirmed by agreement, and also subject to any information that may be provided at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Workinteen. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Would you like to take the stand and speak?
No.
Yes, state your name and your address.
My name is Jeff Ides. Address is 53070 Monroe Road, 40 East, Genevieve. Yeah, so I've been running this business in Steinbach for seven years now, currently in the urban life place. That building got bought. Everybody has to move out. So, yeah, so we're looking at purchasing this place and moving our facility there. So we are, we're not a public gym. We're a private training facility, so we only deal with private sessions. So it's, there's no walk-up clientele. It's by appointment only. We don't have any big classes. The only time that we have any groups in there ever is with athletic teams, and those are in the evenings, like after 6 o'clock generally, mainly just in winter. Also, the majority of those, almost all of those teams that we deal with are youth athletes, so parents are dropping them off and then picking them up, so they're not actually parking there as well. A big part of what we do, too, is work with Steinbach Pistons. So this, we've already talked to them, and so parking for them is a non-issue. They're just going to walk directly over from the rink, either right before or right after practices when we have our staff as well. When it comes to staff, there currently is going to be three full-time staff at the location, and then two part-time staff currently as well.
Okay, I'll just have you stay at the podium. You're completed?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, Counsel Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So currently, you have three full-time staff, two part-time staff. I was reading through the information here. You're looking to grow. What are you anticipating as far as the number of staff that you will have when your expansion is complete?
Staff, we don't want to, we don't want to grow the staff. We'll possibly move it up one more full-time staff, and that's as much as we want to do with growing the staff. As far as growing the business, what we really want to focus on is bringing and having an opportunity for people that are working downtown already to be able to use these facilities and provide training and services to people that are already downtown, which wouldn't really affect any parking.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, are there going to be other uses taking place within the building that might require staff, so separate from the private training?
No, not at this point. The only one, like Silver Eye Sports is looking to move in there as well with us. And there he's, like, so that's kind of including the overall staff. So for myself, there's two full-time and then one part-time, and then Silver Eye, he is, like himself, is one full-time and then one part-time as well, and he's not looking to...
So the previous numbers you gave, that was included?
That was included with, yes, correct.
So three and two, possibly one more?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've also looked, we have also looked to another business, and they said they would allow, like, for staff for parking, like, near proximity to the building, too.
Okay, Counsel Penner, you had a question?
For you, administration.
Yes.
You mentioned that, so the building takes up most of the space, and you mentioned that previous people have been in the building, there's been parking provided for staff. Where has that parking been?
Years ago, when Shoppers Drug Mart used to occupy the property, they owned the lot to the rear of the property that is currently owned by Harvest Insurance, and they used that to provide parking for their staff. More recently, the furniture store that was located there, they looked after securing parking for their staff in various lots around the city that were nearby, private landowners.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of counsel? Okay, Counsel, Counsel Hebert?
Mr. Mayor, talking to businesses in the area, there's concerns about parking on Main Street. We've heard them for a couple of years now, that people are over-parking the signs that are erected. And so my question to Mr. Ides would be, you said there was an alternative, possibly alternative, to you parking somewhere else. Can you appraise counsel of where that might be? Or is that something just that you're not willing to?
Well, for staff parking, yeah, like, we talked to the drop-in center, and they said during, during the day, like, when they don't have events going on, then we can park there. For myself, in the winter again, I work with the Pistons, so I'll be parking. I talk to them, and I, essentially, that's where I park as well, yeah.
Somewhere where you can plug in?
I've never plugged in my...
Oh, okay. No, I just meant the drop-in center probably doesn't have...
No, I believe they don't.
Okay, Counsel Siemens.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What are your business hours that you're going to be operating?
My business hours are when needed, essentially. So majority of our business hours, almost all of our business hours, are early mornings and then late afternoons and evenings. There's very little during the day while people are at work, because we provide personal training, so it's mainly for business people prior to when they go to work and post-business hours is when most of our, we have, like, the odd one, one or two who come in during the day, and that's it.
Any further questions of counsel? Is there anyone here wishing to object to this file? Is there anyone here wanting to object?
I just have some questions.
Okay, we have some questions. Yeah, take the podium. State your name and address.
Matt Wheeler, 102 Poplar Crescent. I'm actually not objecting. I actually just have a couple of questions, if that's all right.
Okay, yep.
Kind of excited. Got to make YouTube tonight. It's a first. Haven't done that before. Pretty, it's great. First, I'd actually like to commend administration. I saw, I was given notice of this, I was served notice at 316 Main Street, where I got a registered thing in the mail. I went to Shoppers Drug Mart to pick it up. I was really excited to think it was a package, and lo and behold, it was just a variance. So slightly disappointed. Thought it was going to be something from Amazon. Like to commend administration on sort of what they're proposing as a recommendation. As a property owner in the same block with a similar issue, where our land mass very much occupies a lot of the land space, to try to come up with a creative solution at CBD pod area, to try to tie it to staffing and parking, I think that's extremely well-done. I know that, I don't believe that the parking issue is actually coming from the, what side would that be? The west side of Main Street? That three, the Main Street side seems to be not as congested, but I think it's more on the other side, where the three, the odd number, the 305s and the 303s and the 301s, I believe that's creating a lot of the downtown congestion. As far as questions, I just had a couple of points of clarity that I just wanted to sort of ask. So all we're really actually applying for is the property's current use currently amusement enterprise indoor? Is that already that, or is that intended use, or is that a use change that was being requested?
That's a use change. And from my understanding, that's the only reason why we have to apply for a variance, because of a use change.
Yeah, good. And then, I guess, then a couple of the other questions are actually more focused towards the property owner, or maybe the applicant. Some of the questions were, had they had any conversations with some of the previous property owners adjacent to see if some parking stalls were available? It sounds like they had. So I really like counsel's recommendation on trying to tie the amount of parking stalls to staff. I think that's very reasonable. I think to try to create 30 parking stalls for a space could be really difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Penner?
One more question to administration.
Yep, go ahead.
As for the comments that were just made, is the only reason this is coming here is because it's a use change? So if another retail establishment had gone in there, would it have to come to counsel for this?
Generally, if the uses remain consistent with what's been there previously, typically it doesn't prompt a review. But there is a different standard for parking requirements depending on use, and that's how parking is based, because the use determines typically the density of, or sorry, the intensity of the use, and ultimately does impact the number of parking stalls that are typically required.
Okay, and then just follow up on that. This sounds like it would actually get less use than a retail space, which is what it currently is.
Perhaps. With respect to the zoning categories that the city does have within its zoning bylaw, there are going to be many variants to what the categories are actually listed as, and the job of administration is, we apply the best fit. And this is where the proposed applicant or the proposed use, this is where the best fit lies.
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Damian Penner? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, through you. If we were to accept a variance today and have a number on it, would that number then be on this building site in perpetuity, or would it change if the type of business that goes into it changes? How would that work?
Generally, any variance approvals that council considers do run with the land, and once that approval is granted, it would stay with the use so long as it is operating consistently and without a break or a vacancy in between for a period of 12 months.
Okay, was that good?
Sorry, just one more.
Yes, Counsel Penner, go ahead.
Given our current bylaws, what could go in here? Like, because if there's no parking, what is that?
C2, yeah. The property is currently zone C2, which, going on memory, I believe it's neighborhood commercial. There is a variety of uses, typically retail office building, this particular category, which is...
But there's no parking.
Pardon me?
But there's no parking for anybody that would go in there.
No. And typically, while there are a variety of permitted uses within the C2 zone, the property has been pretty much exclusively used for retail purposes for decades.
Right, but if it was, would have been, become retail now, it wouldn't have been approved, because there's no parking.
Correct.
Any more questions of counsel? Okay, is there anyone here wanting to object? I'll say one more time. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Okay, seeing none. We will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. And counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll put a number on the table, and if there's a secondary, I'll explain it. I make the motion to reduce the number of stalls from 30 to seven.
Okay, do we have a secondary? Counsel Damian Penner? Okay, go ahead, Counsel Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we've established that this is a, there's some unique characteristics of this property. Of course, it's in the central business district, and we, there are regulations in regards to parking requirements, but we've also had previous cases where we have approved variances to reduce the amount of parking required, because otherwise, nothing would be able to go here. I don't think that it's reasonable to expect this business to be able to provide 30 parking stalls. I mean, I don't think they'd be able to find them. But I do support the general recommendation of administration that the number of parking stalls be tied to number of staff. And here's how we came up with the number of seven. Currently, they have a total of five staff members, three full-time and two part-time. The applicant indicated that he, there is a likelihood of adding another full-time staff person, so that could put it up to a total of six, and allowing for the possibility that there could be more expansion at some point, I figured, you know what? We'll bump it up to another one to put it to seven. It's important to remember that whatever number we put here is tied to this property, and even if ownership changes, and even if the usage, even if the business changes, if it happens to still be within this category, the rule is still seven. So if there's some future usage that still falls within this, so for example, a different type of gym which has more employees, we do want to have enough parking for staff. So I think seven is a reasonable compromise, where allowing for basically two more stalls than what they currently have, on the understanding they're probably going to have one more, and then there could be another one at some point in the future. So I think going from 30 to seven is a reasonable compromise, where it doesn't burden them with excessive parking requirements, but basically requires them to provide for their staff and a little bit extra for the possibility of future growth.
Counsel Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Swagstra's mathematics. One thing, though, that does come up here is, this is an issue with the building, not the applicant. This is something where the building just does not have enough, the building footprint does not have enough space to accommodate parking. And that's something that I think we as council need to keep in mind, that in our CBD, we don't want large sprawling parking lots all the way down Main Street. We want to have a bit of an intimate feel down Main Street. We want to be able to see the businesses and not just have large sprawling blacktop. I feel like in this area, there is adequate parking for quick turnaround customers and patrons of the facility, so that is why I will second this motion.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Counsel Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll agree with the motion, a little tentative. I thought my number was five, simply because part-time staff don't necessarily work at the same time, and you can offset that. I'll go with the seven, simply because that's a viable number. But it is. To echo the comments, our, counsel does have to be aware that many of the buildings in our core downtown in the CBD will have exactly these parking issues over time, and they will all come at some point or another to, as we deal with this parking issue. So it is something that we're going to have to keep an eye on and look at in future discussions, whether we talk about our community plan, or we talk about our CBD, and so on. So I think, I'm okay with the number seven, because of future growth. I appreciate those thoughts, but I'll vote in favor.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything in closing?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I mean, seven is the number of perfection. I mean, symbolic, I don't know. It's really just an attempt to balance the fact that, to allowing for a little bit of growth here. I will point out, this does not mean the applicant has to go build a parking lot with exactly seven spaces. It simply means that they have to make formal arrangements for parking stalls. And my understanding from speaking to the city manager earlier is that I think the street counts for two of them, so really, we're down to five as far as extra that have to be, that have to be coordinated because of the area that this is in. So again, this is the same, basically the same arrangement that the previous businesses there had, where they had to simply arrange for parking for their staff. Same principle here.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I will also support the motion. I do feel that this is reasonable. I think the number seven works well. Yes, we do have the CBD parking agreement that you do, you are allowed two on Main Street for two-hour parking time. So that does, that would reduce it to five, or it could disincrease this to nine parking spots for them, if they can secure seven. Shouldn't be too hard. There's lots of parking in the immediate area. So counsel, I would, I will be supporting the motion also. So we'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, counsel, we have number seven. We have no delegation, and I see no reports and recommendations from the city manager, so we will go straight to 9C, and that is the PSAB budget. That is on page 23 of our package. Mr. Workinteen, would you like to introduce this file?
Yes, this PSAB budget is a representation of the city's 2019 financial plan that's been amended or adjusted for purposes of public sector accounting board requirements. The financial plan that the city has presented does show as a zero, a zero budget, meaning that the revenues that are proposed for 2019 are equal to the proposed expenses. However, with the adjustments for PSAB requirements, there are a number of changes that counsel will see on page 25 of their agenda, which reflect more the accrual style of recognition of revenues.
the accrual style, uh, of, uh, recognition of revenues and expenses. So you'll see that there's an overall adjustment, uh, representing, uh, just under 7.2 million of revenue, uh, as opposed to, uh, some proposed expenses, uh, of just under 1.5 million. So essentially, the 2019 PSAB budget, uh, with all the adjustments, uh, represented, show that the city is proposing a net revenue, uh, of 5.7 million for 2019. Again, this is only for reporting purposes for, uh, the province of Manitoba. Recommendation is that council approve this PSAB budget.
Okay, council, on, um, page 23, we have a motion that needs to be, uh, moved in second. Do I have a mover? Council Damian Penner, second by? Council Bill Heber? Any comments?
Pretty clear, no comments.
Okay, yes, uh, nothing in closing? Okay, yes, council, it is pretty clear, so I'll just call for the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. So we'll go to 9D. This is bylaw 2125, 44 First Street. This is first reading. Uh, it starts on page 26 of your package. Uh, Mr. Workin Dean, could you please introduce his file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, this is, uh, proposed rezoning bylaw, number 2125, uh, for a property at 44 First Street in Steinbach. Uh, the general intent of the bylaw is to propose, uh, change in the zoning on this property from RLD residential low-density to RMD residential medium-density, and the applicants are proposing to, uh, develop, uh, an eight-unit, uh, multifamily residential building on the site. Uh, recommendation is that council give this bylaw first reading so that, uh, public hearing can be scheduled. Uh, the public hearing date has been tentatively set for July the 16th.
Okay, council, looking for a motion? I would like to work, uh, Council Siemens?
Motion to approve.
And, uh, Council Jake Hebert? Go ahead, Council Siemens.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, make the motion to approve so that we can hear what the public has to say. That area has had quite a bit of feedback because of the development that is going on the north side of First Street. I don't know if I'm, uh, 100% in favor of, uh, multifamily dwelling going on this side, uh, on the south side of First Street, if that's what it is, south side, simply because when we came up with our, uh, community plan and zoning, uh, bylaws, uh, that was all, uh, single-family, and we left it that way at that time, as, uh, with the commercial properties on the highway, and then multifamily, and then, and then, single-family development. But it'll be interesting to see what the public has to say.
Anything further, Council Hebert?
I agree with what, uh, Council Siemens had to say. What I found interesting and reassuring was that the neighborhood had been consulted. That the report doesn't say what the findings were, but it says that the neighborhood was resolved, uh, had been consulted, so, uh, yeah, I look, also look forward to the public hearing.
Okay, anything further of council? Anything in closing, Council Siemens? Call for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. So we've got, uh, 9E. We got the building permits on page 45. Council, we need a motion to approve. Council Swagstra, second by Council Siemens. Any comments?
Just, uh, looks like we're continuing on, uh, well, this year, we're up to, uh, 1.4 million dollars in building permits, uh, this month, and, uh, just over 10 million year-to-date, so we're, uh, progress.
Further, Council Siemens? Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Okay, uh, council called for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Okay, we got 9F. One of our favorite excavator licenses. Page 46, I need a motion to approve. Council Jake Hebert, second by Council Susan Penner?
No comment.
Persuade us, convince us.
It's hard to support you if you don't have anything to say. Call for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Uh, number 10. Council question, period. Do we have any, any questions of council? Okay, seeing none. We will go to, uh, number 11. Correspondents and petitions. Uh, 11A, we got, uh, correspondence from the city of Selkirk. Read the municipal assistance grant, it's on page 47. Council, how would you like to proceed? Should we take that as information? Okay, thank you. And, uh, we got 11B, the LG, LGD of Pinowa, the East Interlake Municipal Golf Tournament, 49. Does anyone want to go golfing? I guess we, um, can't, trying to think now, is there a, okay. I guess we have till the end of the week, June 21st. So, if you, uh, we'll take it as information. If anyone wants to go, just let Deb know. Okay, um, number 12, other business. 12A, we have, uh, the Steinbach Community Development Corp. Will give a, a presentation on our Y-Steinbach website. I'll turn this over to Council Susan Penner now.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, just to give a brief overview, uh, since the election, the mayor has tasked the Steinbach Community Development Corporation with, uh, economic development, or at least getting a start on economic development. So over the past month since the election, we've met and we've been doing, uh, a number of things to kind of get a perspective on where we were at and where we need to go. The first thing we were doing is looking at, taking inventory basically of what we've done and what the last 10 years have been like for Steinbach. And the fact of the matter is, there has been significant economic development that has happened. So we made the decision that we need to get that information out there, both for people in Steinbach to see what has been happening, and also for people looking to invest in Steinbach, that they could get a handle of what's been going on. So I'm just gonna go through, uh, this website. It's called Y-Steinbach, and it gives a lot of information on it. Here we go. So we have a nice little greeting from our mayor and CAO.
I look quite a bit younger there.
Photoshop. So basically, this website, uh, gives a lot of information and statistics of what has been happening in Steinbach. Obviously, we all know, uh, Steinbach is Manitoba's third-largest city, and I'm not gonna go through, uh, point by point, uh, but it gives information to people who are looking, uh, what the benefits are of Steinbach, what's been happening in Steinbach. It talks about our growth, um, and also compares us to other communities in our city. And it talks about our trading and investment area, who's here, some of the lists of, you know, the big corporations, national chains that are here. And it makes it easy for people to get, uh, you know, check out our zoning, uh, get some ideas of where, uh, property is available, that type of thing. Gives access to that, and also there's a quick link to the city of Steinbach website. At the bottom, we have in the news, so as news items come up that have been happening in Steinbach, uh, this will be updated, so it's up to date, and people can get idea of all the good things that are happening here as well. And it makes it easy, uh, for both the CAO and our mayor to be contacted if businesses want to talk about investing here. Uh, it does make a difference if they can talk to, uh, you know, the high-profile and influential people within the city, city office. Uh, I'm gonna skip over here to resources. Uh, since the election as well, the mayor and I have had numerous conversations with, um, the Steinbach Chamber of Commerce to talk about how we can work together more in terms of economic development. Obviously, at our study session in July, we will be deciding whether or not, uh, the business tax will be continued, but regardless of what council ends up deciding on that, we've made, um, had some good conversations about the direction we see that relationship going. In addition, I've had the opportunity, uh, to meet with Red River College, um, to talk about, uh, not just the local campus, but also representative from the Winnipeg campus who's in charge of, uh, I guess, satellite campuses, to see what Steinbach needs in terms of training. So one thing that's been identified is, uh, increased needs for trades. So the conversation has begun on how we can, uh, utilize Red River College here and what they can do, and if there's a way we can bring increased trades training here. The other thing we talked about with the PCH coming, we'll need more healthcare aides, that type of thing, and for them to prepare for that, because there will be additional demand to get that kind of training. But that is just in initial conversations, and, uh, will be going forward. I'm gonna talk about advantages here now. So under advantages, it talks about the strong infrastructure, and I know that's not, doesn't get maybe a lot of attention publicly, but in terms of infrastructure, that is a huge key for economic development. And Steinbach has been very disciplined in investing significantly in that. Uh, for example, you look at the west-side Trunk Sewer Line, uh, because of that, that whole Lexington area can be developed for, uh, residential, but that goes along Keating Road from my understanding, so as our commercial development moves more in that direction, it makes it way more affordable for, uh, businesses to attach, um, to our infrastructure. So those, those are things that maybe aren't on the radar and people don't see. It's hugely important, just like our water treatment facility is very important to allow future expansion. Presumably, we could just not do those things, and it wouldn't take too long before development would just cease. So we have been proactive, even if we haven't maybe labeled it economic development. Uh, and also, at the study session coming up, we are gonna have numerous other infrastructure recommendations and suggestions that we are hoping council, you know, will get on board with, that I won't, can't say right now publicly, but there will be recommendations at that meeting coming forward, what we think are, uh, what we've identified as keys to improving economic development. So again, it just talks about the space that's been, or what we've done so far, talks about our key industries, the healthcare that's available, because that's obviously important when businesses, um, are looking if there's an employee base that they can hire from, looking at what those types of things like healthcare is important. Steinbach Airport is another thing. We've been talking to them in terms of seeing what we can do to improve our airport, and if there's things we can do that would actually allow more businesses to come through the airport, but again, that's preliminary as well. And again, it talks about education, the schools that are available, and these types of things, um, give investors confidence that, you know, there are employees and this is a good place to live. And then it gives in general, um, information about our community, living here, shopping here, and it gives a Chamber of Commerce video from a few years ago, which is a very nice video, and just shows a few pictures of what's happening here. This is the initial launch, obviously, uh, as time goes on now, it'll evolve, we'll see what needs to be added, maybe what needs to be taken away, but this is just the initial, uh, start of what we're doing to get more information out there about what actually is happening in Steinbach.
Thank you, Council Penner. Uh, I know that you've, uh, I've worked beside you, I know you've worked very, very hard on this since, since we've started it just before Christmas, and, uh, and I think you've done a very impressive job. These, uh, the lists are amazing. Like, when you look at the list, you don't even realize how much we have in our community until you start writing it down. You know, you, you seem, you can walk past these buildings every day, you seem to take them for granted until you actually take inventory, and that's what you did. You took inventory and, and I know, uh, you worked together with our staff, our staff has been very helpful, and, uh, we just, it's been, it's been a, a, a community effort from, from you and, and council and our staff. We've done this together, and, and I, I really think this is an amazing foundation to start on, and I'm really looking forward to the activity we'll see from this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, Council Siemens?
You, Mr. Mayor. I also, just a comment, I like this, I think it is, uh, it's actually, I like the simple word "why," and, and you answer that through, so actually, two questions. When are we going live, uh, with this, and then how do you get it out?
It's live.
It's live?
It's up. Yeah, so...
Then how do you promote that it is out there, that people look at it?
Well, one of the things we're gonna be doing, I'm not sure if it's connected to the city website yet, but it's going to be on the city website, just like, these are gonna be, uh, connected to each other. I believe there's a button somewhere, there we go, I think you visit city website, and also, it's gonna be prominent button on the city website that people can go here. There's also things we can do, um, in terms of social media, Google AdWords, um, those types of things. We initially got it up and have been, uh, doing some editing and cleaning up of the site, so once we're comfortable with, you know, we're comfortable with it, then we can start, uh, expanding. It'll mainly be online, internet, social media, that type of promotion. There's also a billboard that is east of Canora, I believe, that's Y-Steinbach.com. So those are the types of things we're doing, um, to get it out there, and as time goes on, we'll just examine that further. I haven't done a lot of research in terms of where we should do it, if it would be printed anywhere.
Anything further? Thank you very much, it was a great presentation. Okay, council, uh, we need a motion for adjournment. Council Penner, second by Council Hebert. Call for the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. We'll have to get our, uh, our voting arms in, we'll have to, we'll come see you to, uh, train our voting arms, so that they all work together at the same time. Next regular council meeting will be Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019, at 7:30.